Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 12th day of August 2021. Please rise and join me for a call today.
.......................................... Please be seated.
Would the clerk's office please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lausted?
Here.
Councilman Martel?
Here.
Councilman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilman Scivoni?
Present.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're going to get started today with a topic that I think is probably on a lot of our minds with the heat out there. It's pretty hot today. I think it's 90-plus, right? So we're going to be talking about our town heat emergency plan. We are joined by Ryan Murphy, our code compliance and emergency management administrator, and Allison?
Allison.
Allison, Allison Spano, administrative assistant. You spell it differently, Allison. A-L-Y-S-O-A.
My niece spells it that way.
Allison. Allison. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So do you want to kick this off, Ryan?
Sure. Yeah. So thank you, board, for having us today. We're going to go over what I think every one of you has, and if you need a copy, let me know, and I'll give you one. Jim, I've got two here. We're going to go over the proposal for a
Thank you.
...heat emergencies plan. And this is something that we've been working on. It is obviously timely with today being as hot as it is. And we've been looking at this all summer at this point. But at this time, I think I'm going to turn it over to Allison to let her explain what's gone into putting this plan together, and what we've looked at, and how we got to the point that we're at today. And if you have any questions, we'll obviously address any of them for you.
Good morning, all. As they stated, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Allison. I am the administrative assistant for public safety and emergency management. I began working for the code enforcement department last September, and since then I have had the pleasure working alongside Mr. Murphy. I thank you all for allowing Ryan and I to prepare this plan in front of you today. Today, we have proposed the heat emergency plan that Ryan and I have drafted, in which we are seeking the board's approval for adoption. We would like to refer to this plan as the framework of what the Suffolk County has prepared for its heat emergency plan. We adopted the concept and made it more town-specific. I have a few examples here for you as well. One, wherever fire and rescue emergency services or county emergency management was mentioned, we replaced that with Southampton Town Emergency Management. Two, we adjusted who would be a part of our own heat emergency committee to take a proactive approach and mobilize the response of the committee before an emergency occurs, thereby minimizing its effects. In this committee, we have included Southampton Town Public Safety, Police, Parks and Recreation, and Senior Services. These departments partake a pivotal role in this plan, given majority of actions utilized during this time are produced by these departments. Three, in the Suffolk County's heat and emergency plan, the Office of Aging is listed as one of the agency annexes that would partake in the plan's execution. We replaced the Office of Aging with the Southampton Town Senior Services Department. We changed the language and the actions to be taken that best fit that department. For an example, opening our youth and senior centers for an extended period of time and utilizing them with fully-staffed cooling centers in order to meet the needs of the public during a heat emergency. Four, another department that we have added is Parks and Recreation. We have outlined what facilities would be utilized most, with extended hours for swimming and staffing, lifeguard protection at our beaches. We have chosen Ponquag Beach, Long Beach, and Zykoponic Main Beach. Given these two departments having such a large role in executing this plan, we have reviewed this plan with Town Senior Services Director Liz Dwyer and Town Parks Director Chris Ndulos. We have received their feedback, made alterations accordingly, and came up with a final draft that we believe works best for the town of Southampton. Five, we also made some adjustments to the metrics that we were initially used by the county to define a heat advisory, an excessive heat outlook, heat watch, and heat warning. We have reviewed our changes with the National Weather Service, where we have received updated information and have provided that here in this plan as well. Finally, our goal here with this plan is not only to mobilize all available resources in a timely and coordinated manner, but also to prevent the escalation of a heat emergency into a heat disaster. In the foreseeable future, we would like to utilize this plan and turn it into a temperatures plan. A temperatures plan would adequately provide protection to our town residents, not only during a heat advisory, but also for cold temperature emergencies. Here, the same concept would be used as the heat emergency plan, but it would be utilized differently. And I thank you all again for your time, and I will now turn over to Ryan for any additional comments.
So the plan that you guys have in front of you is built off of the bones of the existing and approved county heat emergencies plan. So really, what we did here is took the existing plan that's applicable to the whole county anyway, whether we have our own plan or not, and we converted that plan into a more localized plan that reflects how we do business here in the town of Southampton. As Allison mentioned, departments that were referenced in the county plan, like Office of the Aging and things like that, we don't have an Office of the Aging, we have Senior Services. So we changed that over to be what our departments are and changed some of the responsibilities over to be more applicable to what our departments do, what their capabilities are, the resources that they have. You know, the county plan references Suffolk County parks, our plan references Southampton Town Parks Department, and deals with specific beaches that we've run through Kristen as to where, if we were going to do extended hours of opening and protected beaches, where she would foresee those being the most appropriate beaches for us. The plan is really just designed primarily the same way the county plan is, to utilize existing resources that we have. You know, cooling centers throughout the county of Suffolk, I will say, having spent the last decade there before coming to the town, I'm much happier at the town still, cooling centers throughout the county of Suffolk have never really historically been, you know, heavily utilized. They tend to rely mostly on the community colleges as cooling centers, so that they have west, central, and east. The Selden Campus, the Riverhead Speon Campus, and the Brentwood Campus for the community colleges. Probably the worst I've seen them utilized in the last, you know, decade and change has been, you know, two or three people at one building. That's it. They don't tend to come to those places a lot, and it relies much more heavily on town and village use of community centers. That's the intent here with this plan, if we really break it down to the minimum, is that we would, if we had what constituted a true, you know, heat emergency where we had to activate this plan, it's another plan that we have on the shelf that we can pull out. We don't really have to sit there and say, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? We have it ready to go regardless of who's sitting in different positions. It's a document that we have available to us that we can pull out and, you know, just go to business real quickly on. It makes use primarily of our community centers as cooling locations, and our beaches, to be able to provide people with an opportunity for more extended hours to be able to get into the water and cool down through that mechanism. Outside of that, we would start to tap into partnerships and relationships with other community organizations like public libraries and things of that nature, and have the regular conversations that we would have with them anyway if we had some sort of a heat emergency, about what hours will they be open, and just getting that information out to the public. It's kind of a simple plan, and as I said, it already does exist on a county level. This just makes it more localized for us, so that we have our own town plan that we can use if the emergency arises.
Ryan, what constitutes, again, a heat emergency? What levels?
So a heat emergency is, in order to meet the criteria for it, we would have to have its two days of
Is it in the beginning?
It's the beginning?
Annex? Ten consecutive days of 90-plus degrees, and three days of 100-plus degrees?
Yeah.
That's historically, I don't know.
Yeah. So it would have to be two consecutive days, I believe, of temperatures in excess of 90 degrees or 95 degrees.
It's in the glossary, like the second page.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see.
And then, you know, it also factors in that if evening temperatures don't go down below a certain point, which is typically, I think, around 70 or 75 degrees, without being on the precise page to reference it for you. And it's heat index-based, too. So it's not strictly temperature-driven. It factors in humidity along with temperature, so that it takes the actual, like that, you know, a lot of times we hear on the weather forecast, the real feel, you know, it takes that into consideration, so that if the humidity combined with the temperature meets the criteria, it's based on heat index, not just temperature.
So it is a heat advisory, and then there's an excessive heat category?
Yes.
So the heat advisory, I'm looking at page seven.
Yep.
Max heat index of 95 to 99 Fahrenheit for two consecutive days?
Right.
And excessive heat is at least 105 for more than two hours per day for two consecutive days. So now, are there different protocols for
Yes.
...those types of events?
Yes, there are. Yep. There's different levels of activation based on what is going on outside.
So right now, we're not hitting that threshold?
Fortunately for the town, it's a little bit of an easier plan for us to work with here, too, because fortunately, we don't hit this a lot. We benefit from coastal breeze a lot more than other parts of the county. So up until late yesterday afternoon, there was not even a consideration of issuing a heat advisory for the southeastern portion of Long Island, because we have a lot more breeze, we don't tend to hit the same temperatures that western Suffolk does, and certainly not even close to Nassau and the city. So, you know, for us, it takes a lot to hit these criteria. And most days, it's business as usual for us. And most days, if anybody wanted to walk into one of our community centers and participate in programs and take advantage of the center being there, they could do that anyway. So we don't have to change the way we do business a lot for this. There are a few occasions where we'll probably hit the criteria for it. We just, we have a plan for if we do.
Now, would we go under a county emergency declaration? Would we issue our own?
It would probably be under a county at that point, because the likelihood that we would have a localized heat emergency that just applied to the town of Southampton, where we would have to do our own declaration, is probably slim to none. It would be western Suffolk hitting it far before we ever did.
Would we be required to declare one if the county declared a heat emergency?
No, you're covered by the overarching 2B declaration from the county at that point. You could do a localized state of emergency if you needed to waive any kind of local ordinances or anything like that associated with it. But if we don't have to take any other actions other than just keeping something open longer, a beach or a community center, you wouldn't necessarily have to adjust anything locally that would require our own 2B declaration.
Okay.
So I've got a quick question on your heat emergency steering committee. You don't have someone listed from youth services, and yet that's one of the targeted groups. We have after-school programs in some of our community centers and so forth. Was there, are you thinking that that falls under senior services, having someone represent?
We could, we could kind of duly list that on there.
Yeah, it might be.
Because it really is the same town department that handles both.
Yeah.
So
But to make that distinction.
It would be under GARA's, but yeah.
Yeah, because you make it upfront, which I think is
Sure.
...the way to do it. So I appreciate it. I think it's a great plan.
Yeah, we could definitely co-list it there with senior services.
And we didn't have such a plan on the books?
Nope. Because it was county plan, which covered us.
Understood. But it's good to have these types of documents
Yep.
...when the emergency does happen and you're looking for guidance quickly. I mean, you've got
As we all know.
...special releases pre-written, basically.
Yeah.
Contact numbers left and right. You don't have to go try to put all that stuff together while you're dealing with all the other
Right.
...phone calls and everything else that's happening.
And as we continue to build up our, you know, arsenal of plans, we're now looking at more of our, you know, coastal storm and hurricane plan and updating that as well. As we continue to build that arsenal, part of that will be that each year we do at least a review and an update of these plans to make any contact changes and other things.
This is terrific. Excellent work. I just want to ask one other emergency-related question. So if we really did get a super-hot spell, you know, we have limited energy grid, right, capabilities, so we could actually end up with brownouts. And now we have basically no air conditioning, and hundreds of thousands of people in the summer potentially here with no air conditioning. Do we have some places with backup generators? I mean, there's probably not a lot that we'll be able to do in a situation. People go to the beach, probably the best place to cool down.
I think the majority of our community
Do we have a contingency to deal with that type of emergency, where we had a power outage coupled with super-high temperatures?
Yeah. So I think the majority of our community centers have backup power at this point. So keeping them as participants in this plan or part of our goals here makes sense, because, you know, I know Hampton Bay's does, I believe, you know, Flanders does, I'm pretty sure Bridgehampton. So all of them, I think, have backup power. Well, whether it's full systems backup power or a limited capability, we'd have to, you know, dive a little bit deeper into that. And then, of course, we also have other places that we could tap into. If the problem escalated to that level, you're looking at a situation where you would be having communications with the schools, and schools that are typically used as shelters wouldn't necessarily become a shelter, hopefully, but could become an additional cooling center. You know, the college has backup power for its buildings. If they're in play, they're going to become a location as well. So there's a lot, I think we're also, you know, it's weird to talk about benefits of, you know, being in a post-COVID world because of how devastating COVID was. But with the capability of people to work remote, we may have, you know, cumulatively as society, created a situation where more businesses might be able to keep their actual, like, business operation closed down and just have people stay in their houses, where we don't have a large office building drawing down on the power system instead. It poses new ways that we might be able to address this going forward into the future, because we may be able to shut down some big power draws on the system by not having an office space operating and just having people, you know, operating in the cloud from a much lower draw location, you know, in their own home instead.
Well, it's also, it's a good question to ask. You have a list of resource on generator providers, but also the town itself and our efforts with CCA and CDG installations to be able to provide those areas of power availability, even when the grid is down. And we've had a lot of discussions about microgrids in this area as well. And this is, you know, I want to take this and waive this a little bit, because I think that's important, that we're able to do that if we build those arrays and systems that were in the process.
Right.
Well, that type of emergency also could follow a hurricane or something.
Right.
You have the power out. Power's out, and now the temperature's gone up to 100 degrees. You've got people on private wells who can't, they don't have water, they got no air conditioning, you know. But I do see you have water suppliers and
Yes.
...all kinds of things. I mean, I'm not trying to suggest we'll see this, like, sort of doomsday scenario, but I think it's good to plan for it, to at least have done the mental exercise, because that's not so unrealistic to handle.
No, it's not at all.
You know?
I mean, look at East Aeas last year. It wasn't a hurricane, it was a tropical storm that came.
Yeah, we could
We had parts of the town that were out of power for seven days, and we had a lot of people in those areas, particularly East Quog, Quog area, that are on wells still, that did not have water for that period. So for a small little event, we were already dealing with the Red Cross coming in and dropping water for some of them and other solutions that we had.
I think you're right. And ultimately, we're probably better positioned than the rest of Suffolk County to deal with a heat emergency like that because of all the ocean breezes, the ability to go to the beach. But anyway, no, it's really, it's really well thought through. It's a lot of resources and energy went into thinking about all the different possibilities that could happen, so.
Thank you. We'll make the change to incorporate
Yes.
...youth services in with senior in the steering committee.
Do you even need to? Because you have senior.
Yeah, we adjusted accordingly.
It's the same department. Do you need to specifically state?
I think you do, because they're actually sometimes run separately in separate buildings and different things.
All right. We'll make that notation.
So, you know, I mean, I'll defer to you guys. You're the ones who are doing
We can definitely back
...jumped it out at me. That's all I'm saying.
It's easy enough to make that notation.
When we were young, we went to the beach.
Absolutely.
Facilities are important.
It's not so easy anymore.
All the county pools.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ryan, if we could just confirm the backup generators on the community centers?
We will.
They will have that capacity?
We will. We're working on developing more of our, you know, emergency logistics capabilities anyway, to assess exactly what we've got, generators, light towers, buildings with backup power, et cetera, so that we have
You might check with planning downstairs, too.
Yeah.
Because we had that issue with when PSDG wasn't able to meet their offset for peak power during the summer. They would contract or tried to contract with some local commercial businesses that had generators of different kinds. So we may have that list in place already.
Yes.
Save you some time.
Yep. And that starts to go into all of those other plans as well, just knowing what we've got there. That's coastal storm preparedness, that's heat, that's everything. We need to get a more comprehensive list of everything that's available to us.
And with our Meals on Wheels program, I'm sure, you know, our priorities would shift around a little bit in the event of a hurricane.
Cold meals?
Yeah.
Spacio?
We, well, the walk-in, the walk-in freezers and fridges.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll back to those changes in, and then we'll bring
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good job, Allison.
All right. Oh, Ryan, do you want to give us a quick COVID thing?
Keep us on the same page. Hour or two at night sometimes.
Thanks, Dennis.
Quick update on COVID?
We have patrols around the beach.
And anything we need to know? Any changes in state policy, local policies?
No, there haven't really been any significant changes. And in case anybody hasn't heard all of the conversation on the news, you know, probably a lot of the discussion, you know, lately has focused around, you know, school reopenings and will masks, won't they be required? And they're leaving that to much more localized decisions from, you know, districts. There's obviously some guidance from the CDC. Most of the suggestions are, you know, masking for unvaccinated individuals, most certainly, but then it becomes a more local conversation about whether vaccines would be required, and would it be masks for all? And so that's a lot of the topic that's out there right now. Thankfully, I can say, as far as the spread within the town of Southampton, and I know Supervisor, you've been paying attention to the numbers, too, as we have been, you know, all along. Our spread numbers are still trending a lot lower than other places. In fact, between the 8th of this month and the 10th, it appears that we're only at about eight people a day, roughly, increase, which was down a little bit. We were at 13 for a little while there. We were at 15 for a spell, and it looks like we're down around eight. And, you know, thankfully, the state's reporting that our town of Southampton vaccination numbers are in excess of 85% of our town population vaccinated. So I think that's a huge contributing factor to why our spread numbers are a bit lower. Our conversations with the hospital continue to demonstrate that they're seeing somewhere between, you know, one and three COVID intake patients, you know, per day. And I have not heard anything to suggest that those numbers are people that are, you know, vaccinated individuals that are ending up in the hospital. Any of their COVID patient intakes are, you know, unvaccinated individuals.
Not one, two, three new cases a day, but on a given day.
Inside the hospital. Yeah, yeah.
On a given day, it's been fluctuating between one and three patients.
Present in the hospital. Yeah.
All appear to have been unvaccinated.
Correct. So we continue to look at the numbers, which hopefully is obvious by just having some of these numbers kind of available to us, you know, ready for this type of a conversation. And if we have to make any adjustments, we will. We're putting out some additional messaging. I've already seen some of the signage up. Frank Zepone and CRC had worked on getting some new signage created for our town facilities to just hammer home the point that unvaccinated individuals should be or must be wearing masks in town facilities. And certainly, the option, personal option exists for anybody that's even vaccinated to be wearing a mask. There's no, there's no harm in doing so if that's a choice that you make for that extra level of protection. As we have throughout the pandemic, we've expressed that people should be very, you know, tolerant and accepting of the individual choices that people are making. Different people have different, you know, home environments and susceptibility levels that either they themselves or their loved ones have. And if somebody wants to make a choice to wear, you know, a mask even with vaccination, you know, so be it. That is the choice that they're making, and we all need to be respectful of that. I think that we'll also see a lot of people that continue to do it, because I would bet you that most people had one of their healthiest years of their lives last year, because they had a filter on their face the whole time and didn't even get a lot of exposure to the common colds that they might have had. There are certain values to the body having exposure to little things along the way, and you don't necessarily want to live in a bubble. But we do, we will continue to see a lot of people that even with a vaccination, will wear a mask when they're in crowded places or around others just as an added precaution. So we're hammering home the point in all of our town facilities that if you are unvaccinated, you need to be wearing a mask. We've made additional disposable masks available to people just in case they don't have one, although I think at this point in the pandemic, most people have chosen their own personalized, you know, cloth masks and things like that, that they feel happy or comfortable with, that express their personalities. But we'll have disposables on hand and available, certainly inside Town Hall, and we can make them available in other facilities as well.
Yeah. And just again, too, we're watching these numbers daily, and, you know, we're prepared to reinstate some of those restrictions, like requiring mask-wearing for all if the numbers increase. We don't feel we're there yet to mandate that, but, you know, I would have to reinstitute an emergency order. You know, as you know, we were well over a year under an emergency order. I don't prefer not to go back, but if the numbers show that it's the prudent thing to do, to protect people, we will absolutely do that.
Right. And hopefully, we would not be the only ones doing it at that point. That's another part of our conversations and our considerations, is that for Southampton Town alone, or for our facilities alone, to have full mask requirements, it really is a challenge for compliance and enforcement, you know.
Individual businesses
Absolutely.
Right. Individual businesses, if they want
They can do as they wish.
Right. So if they want to require their customers to wear masks, they can.
Yes. Yes.
I think you'll find that out and about, that some, you know, keep a mask in your pocket, because the store you're about to walk into might have that requirement.
Yes.
But also, I've seen here in Town Hall as well, that a lot of the, some of our boards are indicating that they would like to at least reinstate the separation requirement in a particular meeting room when it gets crowded. Some of our meetings, our committee meetings get really full. And so I understand that concern, to go back to that separation. So I would, you know, I would ask you to look at that carefully. I'd ask the supervisor to look at that, because it does appear to be an issue in public.
Yeah. The way our public gets treated, I feel like those decisions should not be made by the individual board chairs. But
I just think it's a safety issue.
It should be a town-wide policy.
Yeah.
I know I need to reach out to one of our board chairs who would like to do things slightly differently. They still have to do that.
It's definitely something that we've, we are, we're constantly examining, and we've gotten a couple of inquiries from a few of the members of different boards here at the town with regards to, you know, individual practices that they might be able to institute. But yeah, there is, we're looking at it, and there is also, you know, something to be said for consistency, too, and not having different rules for different boards. We want to make sure that we do the safest thing for the attendees of our meetings, but we also don't want to create confusion by allowing different practices to occur in different environments. So we'll weigh that all out and come to, you know, some sort of an appropriate middle ground that protects people and make sure that the public knows what to expect when they walk into our facilities.
Yeah. And I agree with that, because it does cause some confusion. I have a few committees that have not met for the last couple of months, because they didn't want to meet in person. They wanted to meet via Zoom or in digital thing, which we can't do that, obviously, for legal reasons.
Right. We may hear otherwise.
We've got old law that hasn't caught up with new technologies, but I would assume that, you know, that will correct itself. But we do have some of those issues already. At least I've experienced it with two committees that I sit on.
I've had inquiries from other town attorneys who've asked me
I've had inquiries from other town attorneys who've asked me, are we considering even going back to some type of hybrid where, you know, obviously, right now, under the open meetings law, we have to have public meetings, but whether we want to include the Zoom component as well.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that actually our Antimatter Task Force asked, asked me to meet. Was, you know, if we have a town, if we have a meeting in Town Hall and it's open to the public and they can attend if they want to, where is the violation of the Public Meetings Act when, if you, if you need to have the Zoom calls?
No, I don't think it, you're going above and beyond, you know, you're going above the. I mean, there was some complaint, you know, some of the other town attorneys I've spoke with, there's sometimes they have people who maybe they felt were abusing the Zoom, you know, zooming in from out of state somewhere and trying to disrupt the meetings a little bit and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, well, I've personally experienced that in meetings that I've been involved in, but I could see that happen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it worked well the first time around, but we'll see what happens, I guess.
But we'll see.
We'll hear from the state, too, maybe, depending on what happens.
Might be new guidance, new governor, new guidance, who knows? All right, thank you, Ryan.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Governor Hokel.
Okay, we're going to move on, talk about 2022 reassessment. We're joined by our sole assessor, Lisa Gori, and Maureen Bergman, Deputy Assessor, and James Barini, Appraisal Systems Analyst.
Hey, Lisa, good morning. Who are you?
Good morning.
Was, did you, did you, you sent us something ahead? I did. If you have more copies, I did not. I follow direction. Excellent, what do you need?
I do, yeah. All right, Lisa, do you want to introduce us?
All right, so, as you know, Lisa Gori, I'm the assessor for the town of Southampton. Maureen Bergman, my deputy, and James Barini, our appraisal systems analyst. So 2022 is the year of our annual reassessment again. 2019 was our last full reappraisal reassessment. And, you know, we did the freeze in the two-year interim for 2020 and 2021. So now, according to our work plan that we have on file with New York State Office of Real Property Tax Services, 2022 would be the year of the full reappraisal reassessment again. So we have been underway with that. We started our review in June. We actually brought on a consultant to assist us with that. So the consultant is just basically going to support the values that we're seeing. And I thought that it was important that we bring on a consultant in the area of, you know, reappraisal reassessments due to the, you know, the change in the market that we've seen over the last, you know, year or so. So, you know, we've always been doing it, you know, the reassessments in-house by ourselves. Jim's been taking on, you know, most of the brunt of the, you know, the sales analysis. So not that I'm not confident in his numbers this year, he does an exceptional job, but because of the, you know, the crazy change in the market, I just felt that it was good if we just had someone take a second look and make sure, yeah, that's exactly what we're seeing as well. So as part of the reassessment freeze, you know, the supervisor had, you know, put in place the reassessment committee to give us a chance to look at implementing maybe some changes or something to, you know, lessen the tax burden on the residents. So with that, the reassessment committee had come up with a couple of ideas, and one was to, you know, implement the 5% tax cap, and the other was to implement a, like a homestead exemption. So Fred Thiel did write legislation for that. Right now, the current status of that, I did, I emailed Fred a couple of weeks ago, and the status of that was, with him in talking with the chairperson of the Assembly of the Real Property Tax Committee, that didn't seem too favorable at this time. And one of her concerns were, of course, that whenever a real property tax exemption is introduced, that lessens someone's tax burden, but it also creates more of a burden on someone else. So that was her concern at that time. And also, she felt that it, there really was no precedent for that type, you know, for either the exemption or the 5% cap because if you're doing a reassessment, the purpose of doing a reassessment is to be at full value so that everyone is paying their fair share. And by implementing a cap, you're actually, you're putting a cap on the increase in someone's assessment. So are they actually, you know, paying their fair share? So that was, that was part of the issue. Fred is going to, you know, try to speak more on the town's behalf and try to get this, you know, put through, but it's certainly not going to happen in 2022. So as far as the reassessment itself, like I said, we started the review in June with the consultant. I'm going to let Jim speak on the, you know, the neighborhood review that he's been doing, and then Maureen can speak on the deed process and the sales verification, which she oversees.
I just, on the issue of the state legislation, and that request, as you said, grew out of that committee. And, you know, looking at our system, which we understand is fair, people pay their fair, the more your property's worth, the more you'll pay in taxes. But we tried, we understood that we're in this kind of unusual market, and we had, it's like a seasonal market. We have a lot of summer homes, and some areas are going up much faster than others. And we have year-round residents mixed in with these summer communities and people on fixed incomes. And so we were trying to phase in the amount of time that it would take for them to reach, you know, that fair value, to give them a little bit of a buffer and, you know, for our year-round community. The homestead exemption would be helpful for our workforce and seniors. But it doesn't sound like we're getting either of those. We're in this freeze period, which is, it was a two-year, two-year freeze, so that's ending unless we extend it. But you're getting the data now, which I guess is about, we're about to get into. So we'll know what sort of that impact is, whether that's across the board or whether it's disproportionate, affecting certain residents far more than others. So I guess that's what we're going, we're going to see. So we don't have that, but then we, we could extend the freeze, but we would know if we didn't extend it, exactly what that impact would be, right? And if we do extend it, we're sort of breaking then from being a full fair value community.
Correct.
Okay, so it's going to be a challenge, I suspect, this decision in front of us. And I just want to just point out mostly to our viewers, too, that if everybody's value goes up by 10%, it doesn't mean your taxes will go up by 10%. In fact, your taxes probably won't go up at all. It's, you know, there's a pie of money that the town collects, the schools collect, the fire departments collect, and everybody has a slice of that pie. And if the, if, if one person's slice goes up, everybody else's goes down. It's still the same amount of money. So if, if everybody goes up, their value goes up by 10%, we could lower the tax rate so that when the two gets multiplied together, it still produces the same pot of money. It's really, the bigger issue is when some properties are going up faster than other properties. And that's when that slice of the pie gets bigger.
Correct.
Right?
Is there a map of, that we can see that notes what these neighborhoods are so I can see where the couple that did increase, it seems, more than others? See where that is?
Yes, we do have a map. I can email that to you.
All right.
Yes.
So, all right.
Yeah, if you could do that.
Yeah, I can, yeah. Yep, so, yeah, so you can correlate them with the, with the code, yeah, that would be fine.
Right.
And the code represents a particular.
A neighborhood, yes, mhm, yes.
All right.
So what I'll do is I will let Maureen begin with the deeds and the sales verification, what her process is.
Okay. Hi.
All right.
Everybody as well. So I wanted to mention, just, I guess, you know, I kind of grouped it into three things. First, the GIS and IT department for the town is always working on efficiencies, you know, better implementation of programs for efficiency and working, you know, with less staff, so to speak. So they've been working on for quite a while through Ross and James and the GIS and the IT department on this deed importer program that they're working with the county for these property transfers to expedite instead of them being done mostly manual, one by one. It's an import process. And it was a lot, a lot of work put into it, Lisa, many, many meetings. And just within the last two weeks, we're now working with it live, and Lisa's head staffer for deed entry is seeing a lot of progress with it and definitely efficiency in that. So that's helped. And the reason is, and I wrote this down, I ran some reports this morning, the volume of sales has gone up tremendously, just year over year. This current year, we're only into the end of our third quarter, sales reporting, and we already have 1,605 qualified, what we consider arms-length sale, for one year would be from July 2020 to June 2021. And the prior year, July 2019 to June 2020, for the whole year, we had 1,099.
Before we worry, so the period you're talking about where we have 1,000 this year?
We have 1,605, and we're not even at the full year of reporting yet.
But your year is July to June?
Yes, yeah. It's not a calendar year, it's an assessor's year.
And so.
Yeah, so.
How much are we missing of the year?
About two months.
All right, so it's.
Yeah. We're five, we're 500, we're at a 500 difference right now between the prior year and the volume of qualified sales, and we have two more months of qualified sales.
We see about 300 to 350 sales a month.
A month, yeah.
So where do you get that data from? I mean, do you correlate that with like CPF revenues? Sales on that, or?
That comes from the county.
That's a direct, so you're just taking that direct as.
Yeah.
So this was the last year a normal year of sales? As the typical is 1,000, and we're seeing 1,600 this year, but it might be more like 1,800 before the year is over? So it's not quite a doubling, but almost doubling the number of sales?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, I'm assuming that's pandemic related?
Yeah, I mean, that's the assumption we're kind of.
Yeah, because we're seeing it in mortgage tax, we're seeing it in CPF revenue.
Yeah.
There clearly is a lot of real estate activity.
Yeah, yeah. So based on, you know, on that note, one of, I'm finding in a normal interim cyclical reassessment program, not a full reassessment year, which we're coming into that full reassessment, but in a normal interim year, you know, normal sale conditions, it's hard to keep up with the volume of sales because it's not just, there's a process to it. There's, there's the implementing of it, the review of those sales to make sure they're arms-length before we say that that's a qualified sale to judge our assessments against. We don't want to use things that there was distress or, you know, it could skew your values, either up or down.
For the purposes of the reassessment, though, isn't the sale period, you're looking at the year prior to that?
Yeah, that's.
That's the same, that was 1,600 is what we're looking at.
1,600 is what we're looking at now.
That's the one you're using for the reassessment.
Yeah.
So that, right, so that's 2020, July of 2020 to June.
30th, 2021.
2021, that period.
Yeah, mhm.
And your year-over-year measurement obviously shows that the difference that you're talking about.
Yeah.
So we extrapolate out that those next two months or so until that period's.
Yeah, it could be 1,800.
Yeah, we're sort of getting into exactly, you know, one of the fundamental issues of our system. It's a great system, but once we're basing our data on an unusual year, a year out of the ordinary because of the pandemic, you know, where, you know, there was a buying frenzy, and then we start to put those values down as our values, you're going to see a big jump in the assessed valuation of our praise value. And then it may drop right back down the following year. And so now you have one year with a tax rate increase and one year with a tax rate, one year with a tax rate decrease because the values went up. Now I got to lower the rate to compensate, then the rates, then the values go down. Now I have to increase the tax rate. That's a problem. I mean, to me, it's a problem.
It's like that pension issue that we had, right? Where they valued it at a certain date, and that's what you had to pay the rest of the year on.
Yeah, well, it's like a statistic thing. You have a pretty much a steady state of value increase, but you have this one year that's way out. Do you want to change your curve to adjustment? Or do you want to sort of skip that year as an unusual, unusual year? You almost throw out that data point statistically and say it's, it's, there was other circumstances that led to that.
Well, we do look, we have a three-year look back. It's a three year.
So you do an averaging?
Yeah, yeah.
So that accounts for the one year?
Yeah, yeah, so we can actually see what the actual trend was. So we're, in, in, in our overall analysis, we're looking at the three-year sales, and that's what the consultant, Tom Donato, he mentions it in here.
Oh, good, oh, so you've accounted for that.
Mhm, yeah.
Yes, so his analysis right here is from 2018 through January of 2021. But we are.
Yeah.
All right, so it's not just the one year?
No, it's a three-year period.
But it's only through January 2021 there?
Well, this is what he, these are the sales that he has so far.
They're still going to be in effect, though, because three years is still not a long time. So you have, in the course of three years, one year where it really jumps, still going to affect the average.
Well, Jimmy will speak more, he'll talk more about that.
Before we get to that, when we're, when we're discussing this, we're not required to reassess the town.
We're not.
Is there anything in our code that requires us to reassess?
No, no, no municipality is required to.
By policy, because, in fact, is there any other municipality on Long Island that does the 100% valuation, market valuation to assess?
Shelter Island does.
Okay, villages, well, not villages, no other towns?
No other towns, none of the other 10 towns, well, no. No other towns, none of the other 10 town, well, no.
Right. Nassau County, Nassau County?
Nassau County does a reassessment. They do a reassessment, but they do it, well, they, they do a cyclical reassessment like we were doing. But they, they do.
Okay.
But we have to, for a number of reasons, do the reassessment right now to get the data. We have to do it for, one is because the state still considers us full value, we're part of a plan. And e- even if we extend the freeze, we said basically, well, A, we would know what, what the effects of not freezing it were, so we'd be making that decision. But the legislation in Albany, if we got those things, like the homestead exemption and particularly the 5% cap, we're still listing on the property record card what we believe the true value is, so that you can see where you are in that 5% increase in terms of approaching that number. Or a new buyer coming in knows what taxes they will be paying because they, they lose that exemption. So if it's, you know, if they're in the process of catching up, that ends when the property sells and it goes to full value. So we have to sort of know the data.
The idea is that you're talking about, they didn't get out of committee. It doesn't sound like they got a board.
No, they didn't. So all I'm saying is that we're sort of, we're in a box where we have no choice other than
The session's over.
To, Lisa doesn't know whether the freeze will be extended. She has really no choice other than to figure out what the true value is, since we haven't abandoned the system.
Mhm.
If we abandon the system, we could then cancel the reassessment.
I understand, that's why we hired these folks to do this. But, I mean, the decision is ours, whether we move forward with a reassessment based on what you all find and what we decide to do.
Right, we'll, we'll know what the effects of it. But they're going forward with putting the, finding what the true full value is currently of all the properties. Whether we use that as the foundation for determining the taxes is going to be a board decision to either extend the freeze and walk away from full value or not.
Or change any of the conditions of the freeze.
Well, it's not, we're limited, and without Albany, there's limited to what we.
But we do have some ability to make change to that to some degree.
Not too much.
I was kind of curious to see if, I know there were some conditions on it, whether that had any impact on, on the actual tax revenue. But it, I don't think it did, so I'm just curious about that. Because I know we, we had some conditions on the, on the, on the freeze that you would, you would, an assessment would be, would continue to allow for the increase in, in valuation of that property under certain conditions.
Like if they add it on to the, of course, yeah.
Typical, building permits.
I don't know how much of that occurred. I know there was a lot of building, our building department was crazy.
Yeah, we, we did increase the assessments over the last two years just due to physical changes, no market changes.
And when does that data come out in the year, in our, the calendar year? I believe it's October, when the assessments are, are set.
We set the assessments every year. The tentative roll was May 1st, and the final roll is July 1st. So this past July, we just published the 2021 assessment roll.
Is it possible to move that up so it corresponds with the school, school?
That, that, that would be a question for Officer Real Property Tax Services.
Tax status date is March 1st.
In New York State, the taxable, the taxable status date is March 1st, and the evaluation date is July 1st. So the, the final roll is published on July 1st of every year.
And so that would have to be done on the state level?
That would, yes.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is so that evaluation could be public before school districts make, make their budgets. And, you know, they project what their, what, what the assessments are going to be based on what we do, and our assessments don't come out until after their budgets are set.
I, I am in touch with the school districts every year before they set their budgets to give them a preliminary valuation. So I contact them usually in, in mid-March, early April. Prior to the pandemic, we had meetings right here. I would meet with all of the school superintendents or the business officials here in Town Hall. Now, I just send them an email of what their preliminary values are so they can have an idea of what, you know, what their budgets will look like in setting their tax rates.
Do you find that those numbers correspond to what the tax valuation actually is?
Yeah, pretty much. There's usually not mu, not much of a change within, you know, the three months from March to, you know, from March to June, not much of a change.
All right, continue on.
Okay. So the sales review process, very, very important, obviously, for revaluation. You want to make sure that you're using good arms-length sales to judge your assessed values on, not skewing your analysis. So I'm, I do most of the review on arms-length sale. I do at times have to recruit members of the staff to assist me in that, you know, because of the staffing levels that we do have. With the increase in volume, the pandemic, you know, it's, it's been difficult. So the point that I'd like to say is that after, after these sales are determined to be arms-length, that part of the process, before it gets to neighborhood analysis and review, we have to look at that sales data in our system. Is it correct? Is it up to date? Have they made renovations, additions without permits? It, there's a lot to make sure it's a good, clean sale to give us good analysis, you know, for a trend in that neighborhood or the market. What I'm seeing with the volume, and, and definitely in a reassessment year, is a need for another analyst, somebody that can work between what I do and what my colleague Jim would do, that would work, work together with us. I'm just putting it out there.
Well, it's something to discuss in the budget meeting.
Yeah, so.
With Lynn and myself, so.
It would, it would be, I would highly advise it because, you know, it's going to give us better analysis, and, and the results would be fair, equitable in the overall analysis, yeah. And that's it for me.
Um, I just wanted to piggyback off of what Maureen had said earlier about the deed process and with IT and James and Ross. The deed importer that they came up with for the town of Southampton, we're actually the only town that is now doing this. The, the typical process for the county to release the deeds to each one of the towns is that the importer is now done, it's electronically. So we actually have to log on to the county's website, retrieve the deeds, download the deeds. So the process that Ross and James came up with, it's, it just simplified our whole process. It goes quicker, and now we have access to the deeds a lot sooner than some of the other counties. Because that was one of the issues that the consultant, you know, he was having, well, I need, I need the sales, I need the sales, when are you going to get me the sales? So I did reach out to someone in the county clerk's office. So we were kind of able to speed up the process a little bit more for Southampton Town. But now we have the deeds, we have all of the sales that have occurred and been, and have been recorded through July 31st. So almost like in real time, we have the seeds, so, we have the deeds. So, you know, I just have to give, you know, kudos to, you know, the IT department, James and, and Ross, because we're constantly, constantly bombarding them, you know, with requests for reports and data. So they're basically at our beck and call, and by them helping implement that deed importer process was, was, that was like tops.
I'll, I'll echo that because they're burdened from other departments and other front faces as well.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Tom, when I speak to Tom tomorrow, we, actually with the consultant, we have, we have Zoom meetings every Friday morning, weekly meetings. So he'll be happy to know that, you know, we're going to be getting him, you know, the last couple of months of deeds, like probably within the next few weeks, so.
Which I'll have to verify, to make sure they're all like.
All right, so I'll let.
Like a weekend, but it's all good.
So basically, as soon as they're filed, you're getting?
Basically, as soon as they record it.
Record.
They upload it into their system, and then when my clerk goes on to, you know, start the deed process that she does every morning, she'll see like how many new deeds have been added.
Wow, that's great.
That day before, so, yeah, and the other towns.
Of course, it's still taking forever to get a certified copy of a deed.
Yes.
I'm hearing that all the time, and that's slowing things down in building department or something.
Yeah. All right, so Jim, you can?
So it's my job to keep the town at 100% market value as close as possible. Last six, seven years, what I do is I analyze the sales, I see these trends, and then I correct the land and the building values for about 37,000 properties. And I do that every single year, you know, I analyze the entire town, make the changes as we go. And then we hit the black swan event, and then we hit the freeze, and we saw some things happen to the market. So as of now, I'm doing the same process as I always do, but it's a little bit more difficult because it's now three years of sales we're looking at. And as you know, the, the market did some crazy things. Some areas went up higher than others. So it's really determining what areas and be specific as possible. One needs to be increased 5%, 10%, 15%, even up to 20% in some areas. And some areas didn't change at all. So that's my job. One thing I do have to say is, I know the freeze was put on for a specific reason, and that's great. The longer that freeze stays on, the more inequity you're going to see.
Yeah.
And that would be great in Levittown, Nassau County, great idea. Here, it has to be at 100% market value, or you're just going to see the big properties, they're not going to be paying enough, low people are going to be paying too much. I've been out here for 20 years appraising, and I'm seeing it now as I'm going through these sales. So, I mean, just as a recommendation, I think the freeze would be great idea to take off, if possible.
Yeah, because it's, it's going to end up hurting the working class the most.
Yeah, well, that's what happened in Nassau.
Because the highest-end properties are ones that are going up the fastest.
Right.
But that's what I, I wanted to see.
Yes.
If that's what the data is showing. I know historically that has been the case, in that, you know, certain areas have actually benefited by this system because it really, it hits full value. And the waterfront properties, those summer home areas, those are the ones that have been taking a larger and larger slice of that pie. Relieving the burden on our year-round population, working-class population.
And one of the reasons we put the freeze in place, because there are folks in those areas who are, you would consider working-class, or people who have not upgraded their lives, who are getting slammed on, you know, into this system because, you know, house on the street sold for a very high number, whatever it is, you know, congratulations, you're now a millionaire, but you still live in this home and you're paying higher taxes because of it.
Exactly.
So we were trying to work.
Oh, I know the reasons why.
The retired school teacher who?
Of course.
I'm just looking at it, I'm saying it as an appraiser, and I'm looking, you guys know the area. You have a cottage here, and you got a million-dollar house here. And it's like, you want to say, your house is worth that, and it is worth that, and it is worth that. And, you know, the taxes, that's obviously your specialty. But as an appraiser, the longer that freeze stays on, the values are just all over the place.
Yeah.
All over the place. That's what happened, you said Levittown, but that's what happened in Nassau, okay.
Exactly.
And Old Brookfield never, didn't get reassessed for 50 years, and, you know. People in Levittown paying more taxes than Old Brookfield.
And then they're going to get, they could get very surprised at the end of this. So I totally understand.
And the reason why our small claims are so low and everything else is because our values are spot-on, you know, and.
You know, the classic example is, you know, the retired school teacher living on a pension who bought a summer home that they now retired to, and is forced to sell that house because it's going up so fast that the property taxes now are going up so fast. And that is, we're trying to create a mechanism to prevent that, right? To say, okay, we get that this system, which is, you know, the intention is good, it's fair. There are some of these anomalies. There are some of these people who got caught in it who really can't. We don't want them to have to sell their house. We want them to stay in their retirement home. So we tried to say, okay, if we could do this 5% regulator, you know, if it goes up by 50% one year, you're only going to go up by 5%. It may take 10 years to catch up. We just haven't, and, and I feared that this would happen, that, that we wouldn't get the mechanism. I hope we would get it, but we're running into problems in Albany. And, you know, we could do a, you know, a stronger push, maybe go up, do a lobbying trip. Next year, this year's over. There's nothing we're going to get this year that will be able to change this. We'll have a decision to make whether to put these numbers into place or extend the freeze.
I guess the best-case scenario is having the correct assessments, and then having something where you're talking about a plan to ease it.
Start amortizing the increase at all.
Yeah, we're going to, we have a difficult decision coming up, clearly, fully. And I, I really appreciate your concern.
Because I do see it the other way, too, is I hate to see, you know, the million-dollar people paying less, and then the little guys paying more. You see that too a lot, you know, so.
Right, so to try to find that balance, do we, you know, protect the masses at the possible expense of a few people? Or do we, you know, protect the few people at the smaller effect on the masses? I, I don't know. I, that's a decision the board's going to have to wrestle with.
Understood.
But anyway, so, yeah, continue on.
Uh, so that's pretty much, and then the consultants, you know, they're basically checking my values, confirming what I'm seeing. If they see something different, we're working together, and we'll come up with the best possible values that we can.
Well, what are, you have data, so what are you seeing? Are we going to go through that next?
Yeah, well, just to give you a brief summary, because it's, you know, he has a lot of stuff in here and.
I'm sorry, you're, you're still sort of in the middle of sort of correlating what the consultants.
We just started last month, so we're right, right at the beginning phase.
Yeah.
Projecting a little bit.
The, the consultant's actually been, you know, been talking a lot with Ross because he needs to be able to gather, you know, more reports, more sales to, to do further, you know, further study. But this, these preliminary reports that he came out with in July, just based on this alone, when we did the 2019 reassessment, our, our ratio back then, out of 100, was nine, was 97%. So we were at 97% of full market value. Based on his preliminary results right here, we are currently overall townwide at .89.
So we're 90%, roughly 90%?
90%. The state's tolerance is either 5% below or above. So we would have to be at either 95 or 105, in between there to be.
So we're no longer full value technically?
We're no longer at full.
We're not meeting the standard.
We're only seeing this slice right now.
So that, that, right, so that, that.
Right, so on average, we're, we're 10% off in our values.
About, yeah.
Across the board.
Across the board.
A band down?
No, see, down.
Average?
No, low.
Low.
So the average, average value that we have is 10% less than the true fair market. Right, that's now, now we're going to have to drill down to find out if some areas are 50%, some areas are 0%.
I've only reviewed three villages so far. Southampton, Sagapond, and North Haight, so the wealthier areas. And I'm noticing, yeah, it's basically 5%, 10%, sometimes 15%. Now, it could be totally different for East Quogue, Hampton Bays, and Riverside, and Flanders. But so far, that's kind of making sense to me, just looking at the numbers.
And then as supervisor said, is this a real, is it, is it a one-year thing? Or is it, you know, we're going to visit this the next year or two years from now, and it's, and the values are going to come back down to moderate a little bit?
Well, it's, like they said, it's based on three years. And what I always do every year is I see the latest sales up even past the, the date we're looking at to see kind of where the market's going. And I'm also looking at the listings at the time to see where the market's going. So I'm kind of projecting where everything's going. And I've been out here for long enough to know it's, I'm kind of in the ballpark a lot of times, unless a black swan event happens. But that is taken into account. It's not based on that one crazy year when people went crazy.
So you moderate your?
Yeah, it's basically past, you know, current and kind of future, looking at, you know, what's on the market, how long it's staying on the market.
Right.
So you're saying it's not conceivable, in your view, that you're, you're going to be able to gain that 7% to 8% to satisfy the state's requirement as far as 100% market valuation? So if we're currently at, what did he say, 80?
89.
89, something like that, close to 90. So we're about seven, seven points off, something like that from, so now when you go to do this review with a consultant and try to correlate your findings and his, and you come up with, well, how long is that going to be till we can see that? So we have something to actually consider as a, factually, as opposed to a protection?
Well, if we unfreeze, if we unfreeze. Well, if we unfreeze, if we unfreeze, then we're right back to ninety-seven to a hundred percent.
If we unfreeze.
Our goal would be to be at a hundred percent, and you'll be presented the numbers we come up with, and then you would make the determination on what you wanna do.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to find out when you're, if you actually have that.
That's up to you.
Well, we're, we're hoping to have it, he's gonna send me some more results, he emailed me this morning, he's gonna send me some more results by the end of today, because what he did with our fifty-some-odd neighborhoods was, between Maureen and Jim, he was able to group them into ten. So Hampton Bays and.
East Quogue.
Uh, East Quogue are compatible, Southampton Village, Sagaponic Village, Watermill, they're probably all compatible as far as, you know, um, the residential areas. So he's gonna send me some more numbers this evening. So I'm, I'm hoping we could get some more preliminary numbers by the end of this month. Because what, what he's sending me is just based on grouping now, so the more Ross is able to help him with in reporting, the more he can, you know, expand and, you know, give us some more definitive numbers.
If everywhere across the town goes up by ten percent, you know, we just lower the tax rate, we just do some public education, and people understand, you know.
Well, that's, that's part of it too.
If it's really major differences, then we, but we don't have, you don't have that yet, so we can't even look at Hampton Bays right now, and East Quogue, and Flanders.
Well, I'll tell you right now, it's not gonna be like a specific, every area is ten percent.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's not, right off the bat.
And there's been some weird.
You're gonna see some that five percent, some ten percent, maybe some fifteen, maybe some none. It's not gonna be a, you know, a constant level. I'll tell you that right now.
Not high ever. Going higher.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, like the wealthier areas, obviously.
And that's been traditional.
And there are, there are.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, there are anomalies, you know, in the sales verification process, and then that analysis that needs to get done, it sells for five million and the assessment is two-point-five, there's something with the data.
Right.
And that person is gonna see a larger-than-normal increase because something is not, was, you know, is not.
All of their neighbors, right, because you do this by zone, by category.
Right, we never change one property.
If there is an anomaly in a particular area, and it's just statistically significant.
Well, I mean, on that specific property.
Year average, it's going to raise the assessments of the entire evaluation area.
Missing data.
Not necessarily, it's gotta, you have to have like multi-evidence, you can't just like base it on like one sale that you're questioning. It's like, all right, there's three sales on these three streets, it makes sense, the listings show this, it needs to be raised. We don't just see a sale and just raise the neighborhood, just, you know, right-nilly, you know.
Because there's always somebody who overpays.
Someone, all, all the time.
But I know that there have been some high-priced sales over, you know, the, these couple of years that are really.
Well, those are the outliers, yeah, yeah, those are, yeah, those are considered.
If it's an outlier, it won't be used.
Yeah.
We're gonna have some neighborhoods that are much higher than that.
Of course.
All said.
Yeah.
But I will say though.
It's a concern for people who are still in their homes, and are in, you know, haven't done anything, you know, and they might be looking at a ten percent increase.
The only thing is, for the last six, seven years, every year it's the same. I mean, I, I've raised some neighborhoods, some years five percent, some ten percent, some none, some go down, every single year. I don't just do like, alright, uh, west of the canal is just ten percent. No, it's, you know, these certain sub-neighborhoods, every single year, last six, seven years, that's what I do. You have to do it that way to stay at a hundred percent market value, no other way to do it. But I understand your concern, you know, we're not gonna take an outlier, and then raise a whole neighborhood based on that one outlier.
Of course not, it's a three-year average.
Right, and a state does something similar, not as accurate as you, when they, they try to apply the equalization rate
Yeah.
On the non, non-hundred percent.
And that's what you don't want to happen. You don't want that to happen.
And then again.
Would you repeat that again?
It's what Jimmy was saying, is that state, you know, on the non-hundred percent assessments, they apply an equalization rate. They take all the information from the sales data, Lisa was mentioning earlier, and they figure out kind of this equalization rate to kind of, to, to kind of level off the, the sales to try to, and then, and you take that, and you, you take the assessed values, cuz the towns are not assessed at a hundred percent, so they're like a fraction.
Right, they're a fraction.
Figure out the market value by taking, multiplying the assessed, the equalization rate by the assessed value, and it comes out to the market value. And that's, you know, that, that equalization rate is.
It comes into play especially when we're in split school districts, you know, Riverhead School District, we have, you know, our residents in Flanders. So we wanna make sure that our residents are not paying more of the burden than Riverhead, who is only at a fraction of value. So that's when the state says, okay, Riverhead, you're not at full value, so to bring you up to Southampton to make sure you're both paying the fair share, we're gonna, we're gonna give you an equalization rate to bring your, your taxable value up to full value, so that, that's where.
And that changes every year, so that, that, that impacts your total taxes you're paying.
No.
Yes, it's the equalization rate.
It's not perfect.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the state, the state's looking at the sales that have also occurred in Riverhead to say, okay, this is Riverhead's full value, so you're telling me your, 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 your assessments are only at fifty million dollars, but yet, the sales are showing that you should be at five hundred million dollars. So that's where they're going to apply the fifty percent equalization rate, to bring them up to that full value, and then they'll apply a tax rate. Well, the school will determine what their tax rate is, to see what, what Riverhead's share of the, the tax burden is, and what Southampton's share of the tax burden is. So that's why the equalization, and, and if our equalization rate starts dropping, then that's when, you know, I mean, excuse me.
We don't have an equalization because we're.
Right, if our values start dropping, the state will say, okay, this is what we're seeing, so now we're gonna give you an equalization rate.
It's an inverse relationship basically.
We have an equalization rate of one.
Right, one, yes.
So you multiply it by, something by one, you get the same number, so.
I've wondered how this corresponds to the amount of state aid that our schools get, based on our equalization rate, and the multipliers in other parts of Long Island and the state. We should evaluate that.
It's, yeah, it's hard to get at that, because the equalization rates are not nearly as accurate as what we do in terms of individual property values.
Yeah, when somebody.
State does it more broadly, so they'll look at what the town believed was the value, assessed value of all the properties that were sold compared to the actual sale prices, and they'll see how that's off. So it's more broad, where, where is, you know, property by property?
Problem with equalization is, let's just say you have one neighborhood that went up ten percent, and one neighborhood that went down for twenty percent, and they say, oh, well, the equalization is ten percent. You got an imbalance right there, and then the next year, they compounded again based on the sales. So if you were off on the first year, now you're double on the second. So after five or six years, your assessment is just terrible, it's not even close to being at a hundred percent.
I look at it from a different point of view, I, I agree with.
You're looking at your state aid.
You don't have to explain, but I'm looking at other school districts that get north of twenty million dollars in state aid. I just, I mean, that doesn't exist in Southampton Town, and there are districts that could use state aid, and that's kind of.
Yeah, so you think we don't, you wanna make sure we're getting our fair share, that the, our full value status might actually be hurting us for state aid.
It's a theory.
It's a theory, yeah, I don't.
I don't wanna blame anybody.
I keep, keep exploring it. I mean, it's, it would be good to know that, if it's a disadvantage to be at full value in terms of state aid for the schools.
This conversation with Ops too, probably.
Yeah, but it's also a perception-type conversation in that regard too, you know. There's a sort of a built-in observation that people might have as to whether or not a particular district is worthy of something else. It's not always based on these numbers, and that's, that's where the inequity comes, I think personally, but, you know, it's a long conversation.
It's, in terms of tax distribution, there's a, a lot of different taxes, property taxes that people pay. So when we talk about, like, these higher-valued communities, maybe Watermill or Sagaponic, whatever, Southampton Village going up, that may provide relief to folks in Flanders for their town taxes, cuz they're in that town, but, but not their school taxes. The school tax can be sixty-five, seventy, even eighty percent of the property tax bill. Now, within some of these communities like Flanders, Hampton Bays, you may see certain areas of the school district going up faster than others, like waterfront homes in Flanders may be going up faster than mainland homes, as I suspect. So there may be some shifting of the tax burden within those communities as well. You know, until we have more data, you know, it's hard to know exactly what, how this reassessment will affect people, should we lift the freeze? And the freeze will, it's actually, the freeze automatically lifts unless we renew it. So if we don't make a decision to extend the freeze, we're back at these new numbers.
Well, that's why I asked the question, in order to make an informed decision.
Again, the, the, these numbers right here are only from sales through January twenty-twenty-one. In a couple of weeks, I should be able to give him the rest of the sales through June thirtieth, because that's what, that's what the state requires us to use, sales through June thirtieth. So, these are saying we're at point eight-nine, so it's about ten percent. The consultant did share with me that he is starting to see the markets kind of stable, you know, stabilizing now. So maybe in the remainder of the months, in his analysis, he'll probably, you know, he could possibly say, well, maybe the trend is not ten percent as we initially saw, but maybe it's at seven, seven percent, so.
With that period that you don't have the sales data for yet, that's January through June of.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Of this year.
But it's also geographic.
It didn't, it didn't go down January through June, it probably went up at even faster pace, I suspect. The market seems to have softened a little bit more recently.
Well, inventory is going away.
Maybe, maybe June, July, but January, February, March, April, I think it was going crazy. May, there was, you know, pre-summer, there was a big surge, so I don't know that you're gonna, it may get worse, not better, with this data.
Well, we don't know.
I mean, when I, it's all relative, so when I say worse or better, I mean, people like when their property values go up, it's a good thing.
Right.
It's, uh, but it, in, in terms of the disparity, it might be more out of balance, I don't know, you'll have the numbers, you'll put it together.
Interested to see that, all these weird effects, I think we're, we're all wrestling with something very new here. These, these kind of odd impacts.
Right, and I just wanted to mention too, Jay, what, what you were just saying about the school districts, you know, being the, the bulk of the taxes. So let's just say, okay, let's just say we go ahead with the reassessment, and now we have all this, you know, taxable value on the rolls, and now you're able to decrease, you know, the, the tax rates, or if, if you left the tax rate the same. The, the thing here is that because we have all, all of this extra value on the rolls, what we don't want to see is that, as long as the budgets remain the same, then you can decrease the tax rate, or you can leave the tax rate alone, because like you said, what happens next year if now we see the values start to come back down? But now all of these districts have now increased their budgets because of this tax, because of the reassessment in twenty-twenty-two. Now twenty-twenty-three, we see values coming down, now you're going to have to either change that budget by layoffs, or you're going to have to increase your tax rate to still meet that same budget. So just because, you know, we have, you know, this, you know, if, if you go ahead with the reassessment, and we increase the, you know, the values by seven, eight percent across the board, what, what my, well, not just my opinion, but, you know, is for it like, you know, the budgets to just kind of remain, you know, the same, so that people, so that the benefit is actually passed on to, you know, to the residents of seeing the decrease in their taxes, and not staying the same or a slight increase, and then, you know, next year, values go down, and now it's, you know, now the shift is.
Also remember there's a, you know, two percent cap on the levees.
On the levees, right.
So if you have the average property is going up by ten percent, I have to propose a lower tax rate to stay within the tax gap.
Right.
So I have to, otherwise we'll be piercing the cap. If, if we kept the rate the same, you'd be bringing in ten percent more money, I can't, I can only bring in two percent more money. So I've gotta lower that tax rate, but it does potentially create a problem down the road, that one year, where we have to raise the, the tax rate substantially just to get back to where we were. And people get, you know, they don't like that, it's a big increase in the tax rate, it doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna pay more. It's just the two things multiplied together, one number goes up, the other one goes down, it produces the same product. But it's, it's confusing to people. And I understand it, so you really don't want the number to fluctuate too much in a given year. And that's the problem we're basically facing right now, is we froze it for two years, which was, I think, good, but during those two years, it wasn't stable, it was a quickly escalating market. We just don't know yet whether it was across the board, or in different place, we know it went up. Everybody knows property values went up the last two years for, for the most part. But was it even? Or was it specific to certain areas? Well, that, you'll give us that data, and, you know, I'm sure everybody's interested in different parts of the town, how it might affect those areas. And you'll have that to us pretty soon, it sounds like, preliminary.
Whatever, whatever information he shares with me later on today, you know, I'll, you know, gladly pass that on to the town board.
Yeah, that and the, and the geographic code.
Yes, the map, so you can, yeah.
Lisa, is there the possibility that you could go from a hundred percent valued town to a ninety percent valued town?
Well.
You're no longer full-valued town, but.
At any given year, I could, I could say to the state.
It still would be fair in a sense, but it would, it would be based on the true value of their home, but we wouldn't be taxing them, we wouldn't be appraising them at a hundred percent.
I could, I could say to the state, for twenty-twenty-two, we're gonna set our level of assessment at eighty-five percent. So as long as our valuation in our sales can demonstrate that we're at eighty-five percent, you know, we, we could certainly do that. I don't have to say to the state, okay, for twenty-twenty-two, we're gonna be at a hundred percent value, but yet we only come in at eighty-five, so.
Yeah, but you get that from, from this data analysis, and then you have to verify that, so there's a process here, so.
Right.
So you still could be sort of equitable, in the sense that we know the true value of everybody's property, and everybody's paying eighty, is being assessed based on eighty-five percent of that value. That would stabilize the tax rate, basically, so the next year you could go to ninety, the year after you could be ninety-five, and, you know what I mean? So you wouldn't have this giant fluctuation in the tax rate.
Yeah, it's a uniform percentage of value.
Yeah, as long as we're uniform, the assessor could make the value, you know, whatever, you know, if I said we're gonna be at seventy-five percent next year.
But what does it do transactionally to, to home buyers and mortgage rates and things like that, does it, does that, I, I've never heard of that. Is that some, what experience does, well, I mean, I've not, I've never heard of it, but I've never experienced it, so what, what happens? Does that have an impact at all on potential sales and mortgage rates and things like that?
Shouldn't have any, no impact on that.
I don't think so.
It's not evolved.
They do their own assessments.
They don't look at it.
Excuse me?
They do their own assessments.
The banks, they do their own appraisals.
Well, they do their appraisals, but I wonder if they could, if they look at our data, you know, for, in that process, that was my, really, the basis of my question.
No, because no other, no other town is at a hundred percent.
Yeah, if I ask the question all the time when we purchase something, I wanna see what we actually assess it for, and what we're actually buying for, and what it was actually appraised for.
Yeah, and what.
And it's kind of.
Right.
All round about.
Right, what the town assesses for, and what is, you know, what your house might get appraised for at, at a closing or at a contract, is gonna be different. You know, a lot of times can be different.
So what I'm saying doesn't.
Never did that before.
What I'm saying doesn't solve the issue of the school teacher, whatever, whose property value goes way up. But it does solve the problem of this giant fluctuations in tax rates. If you think that this is a, an odd year or period. If you think that this is a, an odd year or period where we could then figure out what the true value of each property is and, you know, assess them at 85% of their value, not jump up that additional 15% that they went up.
Do we lose anything by doing that?
It doesn't sound like it.
At some point, you might lose a little local control over your valuation.
Right, the state, the state's gonna, the state's going, going to provide us with an equalization rate, and they're just gonna determine, you know, what the, what the portion of our taxes would be for our split school districts, split fire districts.
It protects you from the following year, if the property values then drop way back down, having to do a, a large increase in the tax rate.
Do we lose state aid?
No, I don't think you lose state aid.
Okay. I'm wondering what the incentive is from the state for us to maintain 100%.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's nice to know that that's an option for us.
Well, we get state aid if we remain 100%, but you only get it every three years.
And how much?
It's not a lot.
Not a lot.
Hundred and twenty, or?
Yeah, about 170, 180,000.
Oh, that's real money.
Yeah.
Every three years.
You lose a little bit of local control instead of having somebody, like, somebody James, like James kind of reviewing it and kind of applying your own kind of equalization rate. You have somebody up in Albany gonna be applying your equalization rate. And the towns, the western towns do contest that equalization rate sometimes, you know, and like I said, the, the number comes from the sales data, you fill out your, one of the, one of those forms you fill out at closing.
Right.
TP580.
Fifty to seventeen.
Fifty, yeah. That's the one that they base it on, so it's, you know, and then somebody up in Albany does a calculation and then says, this is your assessor.
Yeah, I'd rather have somebody who knows our town than somebody up in Albany who has no clue.
Right, I mean, you do have a clue, but, but, you know, but you're right, they're, they're more generalized than our specific information.
Yeah, well, they give us a chance to throw out sales that we don't wanna use.
And money doesn't cover the cost.
And that's Maureen's job.
Being full value.
Yeah, I know that.
There's a lot of staff time that goes into, and private consultants determining full valuation.
It's a negative, it's a net loss.
It's a net loss, yeah. I was just saying to Council Miskivony that the money that we get every three years doesn't cover the cost of being a full valued town in terms of determining all those values. It's a tremendous amount of staff time. It, it, it's nice that they give something, but it's...
And most of the western towns, the assessment doesn't change unless you do a building.
We typically do it in-house. This is the first year since 2003.
I don't think the assessment hasn't changed.
That, you know, we, we had a company assist us.
Yeah.
You know, and all those years in between, we were, you know, we were at 100%. We were, we were maintaining state standards, so.
Well...
Well, I, I'm curious to see how that...
Yeah.
All right, well, this was really a good discussion, you know, we'll, we'll look at the data as it comes in. Lisa, when, when do we have to make that decision? It's not till next year, right?
No, actually, you would have to make that decision soon, because I would have to, right now, the state...
We're gonna get the numbers regardless, but in terms of whether we're going to continue the freeze or not, that decision isn't until, what, April next year?
No, that, that decision has to be done by September, because I have to change the work plan. My work plan is due to the state in October. So right now, the last work plan that I submitted said that in 2019, we do a, a reassessment. 2020 and 2021, we did nothing. 2022, my work plan says we're gonna do a reassessment. So I would have to revise that work. So right now, the state's saying, oh, Southampton's doing a reassessment in 2022. So I would have to revise that work plan and send it to the state saying, no, we're not doing a reassessment in 2022, we're gonna do it in 2023, or we're not gonna do it at all. They have to have, they're, they're basing their decisions or they're reporting off of what we send them. So I would have to let them know by October, because they start their analysis November 1st for what...
And if we didn't extend the freeze, then these new values become the, the property values for the purposes of taxation for which tax year? Because that would be then for, it wouldn't be next year's bill, it's the following year's tax bill?
It would be the December 2022 bill.
December 2022, so, yeah.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
That's a subtle point there.
This come in December is based on the freeze again.
Right.
So in December 2022, that tax bill will be based on what we decide to do.
The assessment here.
Right, and we have to make that decision that affects the tax bill for 2022 by this September.
And if we...
Everybody got that?
Eighteen days away, so by Sep, in September or by September?
By September 30th.
She's giving information by her.
Yeah, by September 30th, because I have to, yeah, I, yeah, I have to, I have to either revise the work plan or keep the work plan the same.
Is there a risk, Lisa, if, if we say we're gonna continue the freeze for one more year, that we lose our 100% status and they may apply an equalization?
Oh, yeah, I, in, in, in talking with the analysts at, at the state, it's already predetermined that we'll fall well, well below.
Yeah, and they may apply an equalization.
We're no longer a full reassessment town, yeah. I mean, this right here already shows that we're at point eight nine, and that's not even all of the sales yet, so.
It's, in fact, a minority percentage, so, you know, I, I know we know, we think what we know, but until we know, I, I just have the sense that things are a little different, but I hope I'm wrong, but, you know.
Yeah, so I, I would think that we would probably be at least, probably at a 85% and then the state would determine the equalization.
That's, you think where we'll end up once that other data's factored in?
Most likely.
Yeah, I think you're probably right. It's gotta go from point eight nine to point eight five or something like that, because that, I think that period that you're, you're missing is about the strongest period we've ever seen in terms of sales, so.
And, and the lack of inventory has pushed the, the, the demand and the supply in East Quag, Hampton Bays, Flanders, Riverside, up.
Right, those areas have gone up too. The question is, have, has everybody gone up evenly or some areas?
Well, and the investment in some of the pre-existing inventory for rentals and so forth and all the issues associated with that as well. I just don't know, you know, how, what percentage of that has an impact on the, on the, on the larger picture. Does it actually, is it a blip or is it, you know, significant?
Right.
And also, construction has gone through the roof too.
Yeah, as a result of some of this.
And that is gonna be reflected too in the cost tables for construction, so not only is the land value going up, but if there's a structure on it, likely that the value of that structure went up as well, because of building materials have gotten...
Everything.
It's insane.
Insane. So, anyway.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Pandemic has disrupted the markets.
You know, it's this double-edged, double-edged sword. It's like, it, it's great, everybody wants to be out here, everybody wants to be out here, property values go up.
Thank you.
We've done a good job preserving the environment, but it also means there's more traffic, there's less affordability in terms of housing, there's these other impacts that we're looking at.
Thank you, Lisa.
You know, it's like, it's great when property values go up, but there's a downside too.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna be in the details, try to like, moderate.
All right, so why don't we do some updates?
I was informed to tell you, you have no updates.
No updates. Okay, like, there's always some...
Type that out.
Okay, the, the first update is the cardboard boat race trophy, yes, will be staying here in South Hampton. So, yes, you know, it was a really fun day out on the Pecanic River last Saturday, and Supervisor Actuar did not compete. She had a, an issue that she couldn't compete, her leg has been giving her some problems. So it was Ken Rothwell, town board member, who competed, and it was very close photo finish, no. But the trophy is coming back, so, and, yeah, I used the same boat, the same cardboard boat that we've been using for the last couple of years, so I'm thinking maybe in future years, we might wanna swap it out a little bit, but...
That was the one you had an engineer help design.
Yes, you know, John helped...
Who was that?
Yeah, I couldn't, can't imagine who it was.
Gonna put an apple on it.
This is, this is duct tape, cardboard, and glue. Yeah, so John, John helped me balance the boat, figuring out exactly where to put the seat, right?
Yeah, otherwise you're gonna be in a submarine.
Yeah, so it helped. Yeah, I actually had to put like a, a, a pole under the boat to figure out where the balance point was, and that's where the seat was gonna go, the midpoint, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, well, I'm glad it got the trophy back.
So, so any other, any other updates you guys, you guys, I'll, I'll go looking through my calendar, but does anybody else have anything they wanna report?
They, they looked at your calendar and said you had no updates.
You know, it's a concern that everyone on this board knows, and something that has been coming to us, which is housing, a lot of businesses and individuals have contacted me, I'm sure everyone else on this board, about housing in the town of Southampton, and it's actually creating a considerable labor shortage. It's hard to get people to work here because of the lack of housing.
And also the visa issues too.
Right, well, and I know it's limiting store hours and, you know, that, that kind of things, and I just wanted to bring that to this board as an issue in August.
Yeah, definitely, Tommy, John. I, I see a lot of restaurants closing two days a week instead of one, because they don't have the staffing. I know this year, I've had one person look for a job when it's normally a couple dozen, you know, it's just, it's tough.
Yeah, our seasonal, particularly our seasonal workers as well, it's just been, you know, because the visa was not issued.
It's gotten more expensive.
Yeah.
So I hope the governor or the next governor signs the, the Governor DeJour signs the legislation that Fred Zale put forward for a housing plan, that would be much appreciated.
Well, we have several pieces of legislation, and I don't even know, you know, if they're on the desk for signature yet, but, you know, some things that impact us directly.
Well, the ones that I'm referring to is the one, the housing plan and the, the funding source that would be dedicated for this. Of course, we would have to bring it out to public referendum, but I don't know, I'm seeing limited store hours, literally stores, you know, closing at four because they don't have the people. And when the kids go back to college, you know, a lot of the restaurants are gonna be hurting at the end of, at the end of August for that short shoulder season.
Even, even, even town lifeguards, it's getting, not getting...
Yeah, that too.
Town facilities in general.
Although, well, I'll mention that I did go to a press conference two days ago at noon, which is kind of interesting timing, at Somas, the School of Marine and Atmospheric Sciences. Dr. Gobler was doing a press conference on a new app to track water quality throughout Long Island.
That's cool.
It's, it's, it's pretty cool, and we should all download this, so you can see which beaches are closed, you can look at different water quality metrics, and it's all in one place, just like we use our phones to figure out, you know, which is the best road to travel, you can figure out which is the best beach to go to. There's a lot of data that they've been able to bring together to, in real time, to come into this app, and it's pretty, pretty impressive. The timing wasn't so impressive, because it was literally at noon on Tuesday, the, pretty much the exact moment that the governor announced that he was resigning. So, so all the press there sort of had a scurry about to cover another story, but, so it was, it was a bit of a distraction. But it's, you know, Dr. Gobler continues to do great work over there, and he had a couple of the students who helped work with him on developing this app. One other thing I'll mention, too, we're, we're getting close to being able to bring forward a resolution changing the town code as it pertains to archaeologically sensitive areas. So as you know, we did a moratorium that I guess is expired now in certain areas of Sugarloaf and Fort Hill. I've been working with Jim's office on legislation that will require now, very similar to the standards in the moratorium, you know, certain steps that you have to take when developing in those areas. And I, I'd probably be introduced not for this next meeting, the one after, Jim, or?
Yes, that's correct.
To set the public hearing on it, so, I guess, the next packet should be it, right?
Yeah, Janice Shear and David Wilcox have been involved as well.
So, yeah, so when's the next meeting? It's the next Thursday for a session, and we'll be reviewing the packet, it'll hopefully be in the packet there.
Yes, that's, that's my understanding.
The August 24th.
So for the August 24th meeting. So, so that's moving forward. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I've been working with Parks and Rec and the Police Department and Len, we're trying to bring the permit process for the town parks back into our century, you know, instead of doing all the hand, possibility of license plate readers and an app to tell us if you can buy parking places at the beach ahead of time and so on and so forth. So we're hoping to have a work session on that, you know, pretty soon, I think either the 24th or the one after that will have. The, well, so I went to the concert last night in the park at Good Ground Park, I finally had a chance to get on the microphone and give some kudos to Kristen for all the good work that she does. She got quite a hand last night, but I will tell you, Jay, it's getting dark earlier, you're gonna be there in a couple of weeks, make sure you bring lights with you, because they did not last night.
Oh, boy.
It got awful dark by 8:30, 9 o'clock, but looking forward to your council.
That's good to know, yeah, so, yeah, August, what, 26th is the, I'll be performing there.
You're performing there?
Yeah, I'm performing at Good Ground Park. The, who played last night?
Last night was Mean Machine.
Oh, and was it well attended?
It was pretty well attended for an off night, because tonight is Jumanji, if you wanna go see a movie in the park, but it was the rain out from the initial concert of the season.
Right, well, normally the concerts are Thursdays, right?
That's right.
I'll give you guys a, as soon as I get one, an update on the blinking light. Let me just sort of tell you where we are with that program. So the, the chief has been working with the county. We are very close to the point where we're gonna be able to take the Canoe Place light and put it on blink. The hours the chief was looking for are slightly different than what I said in the press release. I had said five to seven, he'd like to do it from 5:30 to 7:30, it just works better in his scheduling. It is a, it is relatively complicated. I know it seems so simple to blink a light that didn't exist a few years ago, it was, there wasn't even a traffic light there. There are so many people who are coming up Canoe Place Road and making the right, there are people who are coming down Newtown, and then they're making a right and then they're doing a...
U-turn.
A U-turn there. And then you have the, the eastbound traffic, so you take that eastbound traffic, now you add the right turn, and then you add the U-turn in, and you have a complicated, complicated situation. So what the county is basically saying is we have to close that U off, we can't have the U. So we're trying to figure out, using digital signs, et cetera, to catch the traffic that might be going down Newtown Road and bring them out elsewhere. Get them onto Montoc Highway and hopefully they'll be able to move through, because their, the light will be blinking. We're gonna do this for a number of days, and we're gonna assess whether it's improves things or makes things worse. But we have, you know, we've been trying to get some data, trying to figure out, you know, getting some drone aerial photography as well and where the backups are, so we can kind of do it before and after and see if the blinking light is, you know, reducing the backlog, or in particular, taking some of the traffic away from the back roads. Those roads in Hampton Bays that people have been particularly complaining about, all the, you know, like fanning and...
The other side of town isn't complaining as much, the north side of the, of Montoc Highway, but I will tell you, if they don't shut off Old Riverhead Road, where everybody now comes off 27, loops north, comes down and goes through Old Riverhead Road, they have an easy time merging now, because the traffic's moving so slow. Once we get that picked up and people are moving along, there's gonna be quite a backlog and, and a lot of landscapers cut that way, and they just don't care, they pull right in. We should have someone on the, and just closing that off. Make them go to the light at Pon Quo and make the left.
The problem is that light is a really long light. Yeah, I think this, police are going to have to sort this one out. So, yeah, once we close down that turnaround, it's going to drive more people to Old Riverhead Road where there's no light.
There's nothing, and it's hard to see.
Yeah, I raised this issue with the police chief. Yeah, I, that's why I was saying, it's like, it's, it seems simple, we're putting a light on Blink, but you have to think all these things through. And we haven't got permission on the state road, so we, we're not going to, at least for now, the Watermill light, we're not going to be able to put that on Blink yet, the ones on 24, we're not going to be able to put those on Blink. And the ones that, the one at the college, which is a county light, we haven't figured that one out yet in terms of coning. Even at Canoe Place Road, there's going to be, they have to, you know, cone off certain things so that you can make the right safely. You won't be able to make the left turn. I'm not sure how many people do this, but if you're coming up Canoe Place Road at 8:00 in the morning and want to head left, you won't be able to.
Yeah, you're going to have to go to Ponquod and make a right if you're going--
Well, yeah, you don't even have to go up that, all right, we'll have some signage to keep them from going all the way down Canoe Place. But they can make a right and then they can loop around by the Canoe Place Inn. They could do, you can get in the left lane and turn around there.
We need to keep the traffic on County Road 39 and Route 27. That's what we need to do.
Yeah, ultimately, that would be the best.
Maybe a sign saying, "Traffic moving well on 39."
As long as it is.
I only believe that one.
We have three lanes going east over the canal, three lanes going west. I mean, it's--
Yeah, it used to be golden in Hampton Bays. You had all these roads leading to the diner and leading to the beaches, but now it's a hazard. It's just everything backs up right there. They see it coming and they take a shortcut. It's awful.
Right, yeah, they normally would not be going through Hampton Bays. They'd be staying on Sunrise Highway, but, yeah, as soon as it gets backed up, they go right down on 24, right, or on North Road. So, look, if the, if the light, blinking the light at Canoe Place is successful, then we can talk about extending it, we can talk about blinking other lights. So we're really, we're starting with one light. I was hoping to start with like five lights, but we're starting with one. But the police chiefs were working really hard on just getting the one light. Now that, you may see that light go to Blink. It could be as early as tomorrow, it could be as late as maybe mid, mid next week. It's imminent that that's going to go to Blink. So the chief is just working on all the details, finalizing approval with the county. So get ready, and hopefully it's not going to make matters worse. That's my biggest fear right now, is that it actually creates more problems than it solves, but at least we're trying, you know? We're trying.
It would make more sense than, so that light was put in because there were so many accidents going left into town from that road. So now if people have a tougher time, it makes more of an emphasis to get that roundabout on the other side of the canal, because then everybody can go right, loop around, and come back into town.
Right. Were you, coming up Canoe Place, making a right?
Yeah, coming up Canoe Place, everybody has to go right, then you get into the loop, and you can come back.
But you can already loop around, even without a roundabout. You get in the left lane and to turn toward Newtown, and then you, and then you can get back--
It's a pretty short turn lane though, so I'm just wondering. I don't know how many people do that, but it's not a lot of room there to, for--
Because then you have that feeder lane in by CPI, right?
No more, we just have the one road. We don't have, we used to be able to go down a little bit and then come up. That's not there anymore.
That's not there anymore.
So it's a U-turn or go into Parks and Rec and turn around and come back out.
Oh, right, okay.
Because that's why the marinas that are there were complaining when they came out with their boat trail, is they had to go way down to the college to turn around to go that way because they didn't have that loop.
Oh, I see, so you have to go all the way up to Parks and Rec to turn around? Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought that loop was still there.
Yeah, that little sneak, that's grass.
That's kind of, so it's just a straight left onto Newtown now? Yeah, that's, that's not perfect. So the best thing would be to keep traffic from going to Canoe Place in the first place. If they're going to head into downtown Hampton Bays, they could take, you know, Fanning and one of those other streets, or the traffic will be in the other direction. But this is early in, pretty early in the morning. All right, so I did come up with some updates.
I knew you would.
I was just passing on when I was home.
All right, anything else?
I do, I have one.
Okay.
I just want to remind everybody that we have a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. If you have extra furniture or appliances, please bring them to the North Sea Transfer Station on Wednesdays between 10 and 2. Thank you.
All right, anything else? You know, one other thing I'll mention, I have been going back and forth with Ryan a little bit on outdoor dining. You know, obviously, some of the restaurants would like to continue the outdoor dining, and there are people who are nervous about the Delta variant, want to sit outside. The general rule has been basically if, whatever your total number of seats, you know, your indoor seats and your outdoor seats, that's what we've been allowing outdoors, no more than that. So with the assumption that if you're putting all this outdoor dining in, your people aren't sitting indoors, they're sitting out. We didn't really want people to double their capacity of their restaurant, and then they exceed their sanitary system. So we did with, you know, the state emergency order ending, and the local emergency order ending, we've been somewhat lenient with the outdoor dining, but we are starting to tell people they need to sort of, you know, start preparing to return to indoor dining. But with Delta variant, we're, you know, I've been going back and forth with Ryan. Should I do another emergency order to cover this? Should we do a town board resolution? Do we want to at least get through this summer or maybe through Columbus Day with more outdoor dining? So he's sort of looking for some direction from us. Some of the restaurants that received a letter from the fire marshal saying, you know, that we're not relaxing the outdoor dining anymore, they're getting, they're calling me now saying, but people still want to sit outside, what do we do? I think Ryan is sort of going a little bit slow in working with people and saying, listen, you, you know, you have a little bit of time. We're not, we're not going to write you a ticket yet.
Ticket to this winter and then see how it goes.
Has the county--
But we might get a warning, but probably not going to get a court--
Has the county health department looked into this countywide? My anecdotal observations just is that some establishments may have exceeded their seating capacity by utilizing the outside.
Yeah, I think rating it a little is probably a good idea with those places that have really violated it egregiously and just tried to make as much money as possible. But other places really have, you know, that's how they've survived, you know, through the--
Well, the idea was that they could spread out and be outside and still maintain their businesses and keep people employed and, you know, serve food.
Yeah.
But it's crowded inside and outside.
Yeah, I'm just really just wanting to make you guys aware of the issue. Might, my inclination is to allow the outdoor dining, you know, limited to the capacity I spoke of, basically the same number of seats as they always had. So assuming if they're putting a table outside, they don't have that table inside available to people, but to allow it, as long as this Delta variant is out there and people are nervous, the weather's good, I think we should just keep it going until, you know, at least, at least through the end of September.
I'd like to look to see if our sidewalks are still ADA compliant in these areas. Some of the walkways are quite narrow between the tables, you know, when you're walking up and down the streets, so we should look at that as well.
Yeah, well, I know the fire marshals have, has concerns--
Good.
About different things, you know, and then people start setting up these igloos, and they could be a fire hazard, and some of the tents that people set up can be concerns for a fire. So, but anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know that's something that Ryan and I are discussing and trying to figure out what the best public health policy ought to be regarding outdoor dining. And I'm swayed a little bit by, you know, really wanting to help these small businesses that some of them got hurt very badly with the pandemic, and now they have a chance to make up for some lost revenues. And people seem to like the outdoor dining too.
It's nice.
They like it, and there are people who are still concerned about being indoors, and rightly so. And, you know, you know the CDC guidance, they have some concerns about indoor gatherings right now, particularly in areas with higher infection rates than ours. So, anyway, just so you know that, it's something that Ryan and I have been going back and forth on. All right, we have a couple executive session items. We have personnel, confidential legal, we have acquisitions, and that's it. So I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items.
Second?
Second by Council Miskiavone. All in favor?
Aye.